Jerry, we're good to go.
Okay.
I'd like to call this meeting to order. Good morning, everyone, and let's stand for the pledge.
A pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the United States of America.
To the republic.
To the republic for which we stand.
A nation.
A nation of God. Justice, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Entertain a motion to approve the reading of the minutes.
You may not have heard you, Mr. Chairman.
Motion, Scott.
Oh, sorry.
I was on mute, sorry.
Second.
Okay, another question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, proclamation presentation.
Thank you. For the millions of people who are struggling and have lost a loved one to suicide, to my cousin Kevin, my good friend Colin and his family, I'm honored to read this proclamation. Whereas suicide is a leading cause of death in the United States and in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, one person dies by suicide every four hours, making it the second-leading cause of death for ages fifteen to thirty-four, and the fourth-leading cause of death for ages thirty-five to fifty-four. Whereas nearly five million people in the United States have lost a loved one to suicide and to each member of our community is avvalued and irreplaceable. And talking openly about stress and psychological health builds trust, reduces barriers to care, and enables early intervention. And local and statewide suicide prevention efforts should be developed and encouraged to the maximum extent possible. Whereas the Lackawanna-Susquehanna Behavioral Science Intellectual Disabilities Early Intervention Program works with community stakeholders to ensure that each citizen has access to mental health services and mental health crisis intervention to spread the message that help and resources are available. Whereas local and statewide suicide prevention efforts should be developed and encouraged to the maximum extent possible. Now, therefore, we, Jerry Notariani, Debbie Dominic, and myself, Chris Schirmer, Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, do hereby acknowledge and proclaim September tenth, two thousand and twenty, as Suicide Prevention Awareness Day here in Lackawanna County.
And here to speak on this is Mary Ann Colbert.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Thank you so much for proclaiming September tenth as Suicide Prevention Day in Lackawanna County. We're so appreciative of that. As stated in the proclamation, suicide is a leading cause of death in the United States. And the purpose of Suicide Prevention Month and Suicide Prevention Day is to spread messages of hope and to educate the community that help and resources are available to save lives. Today and every day in Lackawanna County, whether it's Suicide Prevention Month or not, we can all do our part to help save lives. And we can do that by recognizing the signs that someone may be thinking about suicide, feeling hopeless, feeling helpless. And we can reach out to those individuals, our family members, our friends, our work colleagues, and anyone that we are interacting with, and check in with them and say, I see you're not yourself. What's going on? I care about you. I'm here if you need me. I'm here to talk. And then you can also direct those individuals to professional help if needed. But sometimes just that simple act of reaching out to someone and saying, I care about you, you're important, is really enough to be the catalyst for them to reach out for more professional help. And it really can save a life. And as Commissioner Schirmer said, every life is precious and valuable. So I encourage you to do that, and thank you for making this proclamation encouraging all of Lackawanna County citizens to be thinking about suicide and reducing the stigma of suicide. And in Lackawanna County, we have twenty-four-hour professional help available for anyone who is thinking about this at five seven zero three four eight sixty-one hundred. It's available to every citizen in Lackawanna County twenty-four hours a day. And then there's the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline at one eight hundred two seven three TALK, T-A-L-K. And hopefully, together, we will prevent future incidents of suicide. Thank you.
Thank you. It's an important issue, there's no question about it. All right, moving on, opportunity for the public to address the board agenda items only. Any questions, Ms. Hart?
No, we didn't receive any emails about the agenda.
Resolution two zero zero one seven six.
Approving current payables, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the following payables. Lackawanna County General Fund numbers three zero eight two nine zero dash three zero eight seven nine six inclusive, totaling two million two hundred and sixty-seven thousand fourteen dollars and thirteen cents. Electronic fund transfers, including all payroll accounts totaling two million nine hundred and eighty-five thousand nine hundred and nine dollars and ninety-two cents, adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on September second, two thousand and twenty.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve the payment of the current payables.
Motion.
Second.
One question.
Just one question. I thought I asked this last meeting. Looks like it must be an insurance payment, one hundred and sixty-seven thousand to Joyce Jackman and Bell. Is that a duplicate?
You're on mute, Gary.
Gary, you're on mute.
Gary, you're on mute.
Got it, got it, thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Just to answer Commissioner Schirmer, there are two invoices payable to Joyce Jackman and Bell Insurance, and one is for one hundred and sixty-seven thousand two hundred and seventy-two dollars. That is for the renewal of workers' compensation insurance. And the other is for four thousand, four thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars. And that is a final payment for last year's workers' compensation insurance based on the final audit that was done for the actual payroll. Whereas the renewal is based on the current set payroll that was just audited for moving forward. So workers' compensation, and it's not a duplicate, it's renewal policies.
Chris, I have to ask, is there a problem with the name Joyce? Because every single Commissioners' meeting, you bring up either Joyce legal fees or Joyce insurance fees. So I don't know what the issue is, but you should do your due diligence. If you have a complaint about something, then you should go after the Commissioners' meeting or before and look at it and figure out whether or not it's a valid complaint or what it's about. Because I feel as though personal reasons or political reasons are being introduced here every time you talk about and you pick on, basically, the Joyce family for I don't know what reason. And our personal business has no business in government.
That is farthest from the truth. I'm looking at astronomical numbers and asking questions so the public knows what's going on and where their money is being spent.
I can ask questions all day long, but do you get any answers?
I just got my answer.
At the one Commissioners' meeting, you talked about bills in the amount of twenty-two thousand dollars, so Joyce Moran and Carmody. But I looked at them after that meeting, and eighteen thousand out of twenty-two thousand of those bills were for Joyce, Joe Joyce's role as acting tax claim director. So it just seems that out of all these payables, you're constantly, you know, singling out.
The biggest ones, just the biggest ones.
No, just the Joyce name.
It just seems to be very excessive, very excessive.
Keep your personal and your political opinions out of government. That's why this is the way it is.
Okay, that's your opinion.
No, it's a fact.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Right, resolution two zero zero one seven eight.
Approving a plan of financing by the Scranton Lackawanna Health and Welfare Authority for the Scranton Preparatory School, Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania. Approving, in accordance with section one four seven F of the Internal Revenue Code of nineteen eighty-six, as amended, a plan of financing of the Scranton Lackawanna Health and Welfare Authority and declaring that it is desirable for the health, safety, and welfare of the people of the county of Lackawanna for the Scranton Lackawanna Health Welfare Authority to undertake a project for Scranton Preparatory School. Whereas pursuant to the Pennsylvania Municipality Authorities Act as amended, the county of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, together with the city of Scranton, Pennsylvania, created the Scranton Lackawanna Health and Welfare Authority to act as a financing authority for projects serving the city and/or the county. And whereas Scranton Preparatory School has requested the authority to issue its revenue notes in one or more series and in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed eighteen million dollars to finance, refinance, and/or reimburse a project for the benefit of the borrower consisting of all or any of the following. A, refunding the Lackawanna County Industrial and Development Authority's outstanding revenue bonds, series twenty-ten issued for the benefit of the borrower. B, designing, acquiring, constructing, renovating, improving, installing, and equipping various capital projects of the borrower and acquiring various capital equipment for use in or in connection with the facilities of the borrower located in one thousand Wyoming Avenue, Scranton, Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania. C, refunding the authority's taxable note or notes to be issued as one or more of the series of notes authorized as part of the financing described in this resolution to finance a portion of the cost of the project described herein. D, refunding any other outstanding indebtedness of the borrower in advantage to the borrower. And C, funding contingencies and paying all or a portion of the costs and expenses of the issuance of the notes. And whereas the authority has authorized the issuance of the notes pursuant to a resolution adopted by the authority in August twentieth, two thousand and twenty, subject to approval of the project by the city and by the county. And whereas the approval by this board, as evidenced by this resolution, will enable the authority to finance the project without imposing any liability on the county or its citizens or taxpayers with respect to the notes. And whereas section one four seven F of the Internal Revenue Code of nineteen eighty-six as amended requires, if the applicable elected representative of the governmental unit on behalf of which bonds or notes are issued, and of each governmental unit having jurisdiction over the area in which any facility with respect to which financing is to be provided from the net proceeds of such bonds or notes as located, approve such notes after a public hearing in order for a private activity bond to be qualified bond under the code. And whereas this board is the applicable elected representative of the county within the meaning of the code, and whereas in accordance with section one four seven F of the code, a public hearing was held by the authority in five P M. local time on August twentieth, two thousand and twenty in connection with the issuance of the notes, and a report of such hearing has been provided to this board. And whereas the county desires to approve the financing of the project for the benefit of the borrower and to determine that it is desirable for the health, safety, and welfare of the people in the area served by the borrower and the project to have the project financed by and through the authority. Thus, therefore, the Board of Commissioners, County Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna, hereby resolves that, one, the issuance of the notes by the authority in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed of eighteen million dollars, and the use of the proceeds of the notes to finance the project is hereby approved. Two, it is hereby declared desirable for the health, safety, and welfare of the people in the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, to have the authority issue the notes for the purpose of the financing, the project. And number three, the foregoing action of this board shall not in any way pledge or obligate the credit or the taxing power of the county of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, nor shall the county be liable for the payment of the principal of, principal, premium, if any, or interest on the notes or any other costs related thereto. Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on September second, two thousand and twenty. Here to speak on that is Brian Kozlanski.
Good morning, everybody. This is our standard health, safety, and welfare resolution that's required by the Municipal Authorities Act and the tax code whenever we do or the authority does a tax refinancing for a nonprofit agency in the county. This is a financing for Scranton Preparatory School. It's primarily a refunding of outstanding debt or two thousand and ten issue. There is a little bit of new money, or there's potentially a little bit of new money, five hundred thousand to seven hundred and fifty thousand for technology improvements, other things around campus, but it's primarily a refunding of outstanding debt. There is no obligation on the county. This is purely a procedural approval, as you've seen before on other projects. No funds of the county are going to use for this project. It is strictly a tax code requirement and a Municipal Authorities Act requirement. Happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions for Brian? On that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
Make a motion.
I'll second.
Another question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Thanks.
Resolution two zero zero one seven nine.
Entering into an agreement with Precise Trial, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby enter into a statement of work with Precise Trial LLC for the Lackawanna County Courthouse installation of equipment to facilitate social distancing for jurors in a courtroom setting with a cost not to exceed thirty-five thousand one hundred and fifty dollars and twenty-eight cents, adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on September second, two thousand and twenty. Here to speak on that, Commissioners, is County Clerk and Administrator Frank Castellano.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you this morning. On behalf of the Court of Common Pleas, I respectfully request that the county enter into this contractual agreement with Precise Trial. Precise Trial will provide the necessary and appropriate audio and visual equipment where we will be able to outfit three of our largest courtrooms in the main county courthouse to allow us to appropriately social distance. The jurors and witnesses who will be testifying in our upcoming jury trials will also allow for additional equipment to be used in three of our smaller courtrooms in the main courthouse for an overflow crowd where members of the public or press would be able to have access via the audio and visual equipment to the trials that are taking place. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this time.
No, this is something you've been working on for quite a while now, Frank.
Correct, Commissioner. This is something that the courts, in conjunction with numerous county departments, have been working on for quite some time. It is important for me to say this is budget neutral in the sense that it will be, I believe, reimbursable because this is a direct result of the actions that we have to take due to the COVID- nineteen pandemic.
Thank you, Frank.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Questions for Frank?
Mr. Chairman, this resolution and the next two resolutions are dealing with getting the courts back up and running for jury trials. We spoke with Director Sacco, and all of these will be submitted for reimbursements under the CARES Act.
Right, okay, great. All right, entertain a motion to accept the resolution.
I'll make that motion.
Sorry, I was on mute. I second it.
Okay, another question, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thanks, Frank. Resolution two zero zero one eight zero.
Approving a proposal submitted by Thompson Reuters. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the proposal submitted by Thompson Reuters to the Lackawanna County Court Administration for the evidence-sharing platform powered by Case Lines to enable virtual hearings. This is a one-year subscription and a professional service not to cost more than seventy-five thousand dollars. Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on September second, two thousand and twenty. Once again, to speak on this is Attorney Castellano.
Thank you. Commissioners, this is a proposed agreement for the county to enter into services for one year with the Thompson Reuters Corporation. As you know, the county already has a relationship with Thompson Reuters. They're the ones that provide the Westlaw Services. This particular agreement will allow the necessary and appropriate software to be purchased and installed for an evidence-sharing platform during the course of our trials. This is also something that has become necessary because of the way we have to set up our courtrooms during the current pandemic to allow for social distancing of the jurors and the witnesses. We're asking that this be a one-year contract so that we can make sure it provides exactly what we need at the best price. And then we would revisit the issue a year from now. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. But as Brian stated, this also will be budget neutral in the sense that I believe it will be covered by the CARES Act.
Brian, that is correct. Brian? It is correct.
Yes.
This is correct.
Do you want to have any questions for Frank?
No, I don't.
No.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
Motion.
Second.
Other question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, resolution two zero zero one eight two.
Entering into a license agreement with the Scranton Cultural Center, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby enter into a license agreement with the Scranton Cultural Center on behalf of the Lackawanna County Courts for the COVID- nineteen court relocation rental to begin on September eighth, two thousand and twenty, and end on December seventeenth, two thousand and twenty. Rental spaces are the Weinberg Theater and Lobby, the Grand Ballroom and Lobby, the Weinberg Stage, and to include increased maintenance, disinfecting sound systems, and internet access with the cost of one hundred and twenty thousand nine hundred and thirty-six dollars if all four months are used. Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on September second, two thousand and twenty. Here to speak on that, once again, is Attorney Castellano.
Thank you. Commissioners, this contract is for services to be provided by the Scranton Cultural Center. As you all are aware, we are looking to do our jury assembly and jury selection process at the Scranton Cultural Center because of the necessity of greater space because of social distancing than the courthouse could provide. So over the past couple of months, with the cooperation of all of you and other county departments, we've put a plan in place. We're beginning next week. On September eighth, jury trials will resume here in the Lackawanna County Court of Common Pleas, and jurors will be instructed to report to the Scranton Cultural Center for assembly, check-in, orientation, and the actual selection of the jury panel will take place there prior to the jurors coming to the courthouse for their individual courtroom. This is, in our opinion, absolutely necessary. It's the most appropriate space available. It's safe, it's clean, it'll provide an excellent venue for the courts, the jurors, and the people we serve. So we respectfully request that this contract be approved.
Thanks, Frank. This was a project that we had to undertake, and Chief Jeffers spearheaded it, and we looked at numerous venues to try to make it the best and easiest for the jurors. It appears to be the most appropriate, and we can go forward from here at this point.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, the Commissioners should know that this license is based on a month-to-month basis for usage. In other words, the courts are starting their trials in September. However, if COVID- nineteen comes back into our area in a rapid manner like it did in the spring, the courts will make a decision whether they're going to go forward or not. If they choose not to go forward, we therefore do not have to pay for space that we're not using. I think that was very important, and the Cultural Center was very cooperative in everything that we went through with them, including Attorney Castellano had a mock trial there with the president judge about two or three weeks ago. And things went well. They ironed out any bugs that were any problems, and the Cultural Center has been very, very helpful to us.
So this was done in the most fiscally responsible manner possible.
That is correct.
Circumstances. Okay, anyone have any other questions? Okay, on that, I'll entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
Make a motion.
Second.
Another question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, Commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Frank.
Resolution two zero zero one eight one.
Entering into an intergovernmental cooperative agreement, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby enter into an intergovernmental cooperative agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Human Services and the Domestic Relations Section of the Court of Common Pleas. It's a five-year agreement to take effect October first, two thousand and twenty. Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on September second, two thousand and twenty. Here to speak on that is Domestic Relations Director Kathy Hardaway.
Good morning. This five-year agreement sets forth the Title IV Child Support Activities of the Domestic Relations Section, also the administrative duties of the DRS and administrative duties of the Department of Human Services. More importantly, on behalf of Lackawanna County, this agreement means that there is reimbursement at a rate of sixty-six percent for all Title IV activities that are eligible expenditures, and also quarterly federal financial performance incentive payments that are received by Lackawanna County when the DRS has performance standards above eighty percent, all of which the Lackawanna County DRS meets quarterly.
Thank you.
That's all that I have. Is there any questions entertained?
I do not have any.
Okay, no one has any questions for Ms. Hardaway?
No.
On that, we'll entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
Motion.
A second.
Another question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Dominic, your mic's off.
No questions.
Aye.
Aye. Sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Kathy.
Thank you.
Resolution two zero zero one eight three.
Entering into a cooperation agreement with the All One Foundation, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna is hereby authorized to enter into a cooperation agreement with the All One Foundation and Charities, eighty-three East Union Street, Wilkes-Barre, Pennsylvania, to fund the nursing home SOS program in northeastern and north-central Pennsylvania. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna does hereby award the following COVID- nineteen county relief block grant to the All One Foundation and Charities for the funding of the nursing home SOS program in northeastern and north-central Pennsylvania in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on September second, two thousand and twenty. Here to speak on that, Commissioners, is Economic Development Director Brenda Sacco.
Good morning, everyone. This resolution states that the county is awarding the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of COVID- nineteen county relief block grant funds and entering into the cooperation agreement with All One Foundation and Charities. This will fund the nursing home SOS program, and the program will provide for much-needed PPE infection control supplies and symptom screening materials to nursing facilities hit hardest by the pandemic. And this has actually been in place, this program, since late May, early June, and they have distributed much-needed PPE to the nursing facilities. So it's a very successful program, and it's what the COVID- nineteen money is for. Any questions?
Well, and since it was a joint effort between some counties, Commissioner Dominic brought to our attention, everyone's attention, that we want to make sure that the money we donated was spent in Lackawanna County. we donated was spent in Lackawanna County. That was very important, and that was done by your office. You're on top of that, and that's happening properly, correct?
Correct, and it's within the cooperation agreement as well. We made sure that was stated.
Okay.
Anybody have any other questions for Brenda?
This was spearheaded by Senator Udchak, I believe, right, Jerry? This is what we met with him about?
Yeah.
That's correct, Commissioner Sherman.
Brenda, I just want to say you're doing an awesome job.
Oh, thank you, Commissioner. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
It's a great job. It's a good cause, and it's what we should use the money for. All right. No other questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Another question? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Resolution two zero, zero, one, eight, four.
Entering into cooperation agreement with the SLHDA, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of County of Lackawanna is hereby authorized to enter into a cooperation agreement with the Scranton Lackawanna Human Development Agency, one-twenty-three Wyoming Avenue Suite three-eleven, Scranton, Pennsylvania, for the funding of a pre-kindergarten program. Be it further resolved, but the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna is hereby award the following COVID-19 County Relief Block Grant, the Scranton Lackawanna Human Development Agency, for the funding of a pre-kindergarten program in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on September second, two thousand and twenty. Here to speak on that again is Director Sacco.
Morning again. This resolution also states that the county is awarding part of the County Relief Block Grant Funds to SLHDA in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars, and also entering into a cooperation agreement, and this will fund a pre-kindergarten program. The program will assist children between the ages of three to five and their parents who have been impacted by the current pandemic. SLHDA is looking to expand classroom space, hire additional teachers, purchase PPE, partitions, and sanitizing services for the program that's going to offer in-person educational services to children of low income. This program is part of a larger project through SLHDA, and it will be run out of Holy Rosary School, the old Holy Rosary School in North Scranton. And again, this is absolutely what those funds are intended to do, is to assist within this pandemic. And, you know, assisting pre-kindergarten programs is something that we feel will definitely have an impact with these dollars. Any questions?
Okay. Anyone have any other questions for Brenda?
I do not.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
I'll make it. Motion.
I'll second.
Another question? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Resolution two zero, zero, one, eight, five.
Entering into a food service First Amendment, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby enter into a First Amendment to the Food Service Management Agreement on behalf of the Lackawanna County Prison with Aramark Correctional Services, LLC, and to extend the agreement expiration date until June thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two, and a CPI increase of two-point-one percent. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on September second, two thousand and twenty. Here to speak on that, Commissioners, is Warden Tim Betty.
Hi, Tim. He's not connected yet. There he is.
Hey, am I live now?
You are, sir. Go right ahead.
Yeah, I was trying to unmute it. Regarding Resolution twenty dash zero, one, eight, five, the Food Service Amendment, we've had Aramark Food Services as our food providers since August of eighteen, and I'm happy with the services that they've provided for the last two years. The amendment before you today does three things. It allows for a two-point-one percent increase in the cost of a meal, amounting to an increase of about two cents per inmate meal. It extends, number two, it extends the contract between the county and Aramark by a year until July thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-two, and number three, it locks us in at the price, at this price throughout the duration of that contract. And I mean, I'm open for fielding any questions that the Commissioners may have.
Well, the small increase is, you know, due primarily to the increase in food costs.
Absolutely. There's been, I mean, with the COVID crisis pandemic that's going on, everything is, from what I'm understanding, all prices are going up because of the cost per transportation, because of facilities that are shut down, et cetera, et cetera. Again, it's a pretty mild increase. It's two cents a meal, two cents a inmate meal.
Very good.
Anyone have any other questions for Warden Betty?
Do not.
Neither do I.
I'll entertain a motion to approve that resolution.
Motion.
Second.
Another question? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thanks, Tim.
Okay, thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you, Warden Tim.
Two zero, zero, one, eight, six.
Accepting a quote from ESNS. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby accept the quote from Election Systems and Software, ESNS, for the purchase of a high-speed digital scanner to cost forty-nine thousand, one hundred dollars and to enter into an addendum to an agreement adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on September second, two thousand and twenty. Commissioners, I will speak on this on behalf of Director Medallis of the Voter Registration Bureau. As everyone knows, we had an enormous amount of mail-in ballots in the primary, and we had two scanners that scanned them and counted the ballots for us here in the downstairs of the Globe Store. We felt as though we needed a third one for the general election. We did about thirty-four thousand in the primary, and we're going to do about, we're thinking fifty-five thousand or so in the general election due to the presidential race. As everyone knows, we counted our votes within twenty-four hours, and we're one of the first counties to submit our results in the Commonwealth, especially one of the larger counties. We had a very efficient use of manpower and machinery to take care of this in the primary, and we believe that we need to update it and grab another one so that we can have the same results in the same fashion in the general election. We also purchased not too long ago an envelope opener that does about twenty-five hundred envelopes within a minute, so that will break down the time constraints on us loss. Any questions?
Most of this money came from a grant. Is that correct, Mr. Chairman?
That is correct. This is an Election Bureau grant that was distributed to our Election Bureau in the beginning of the year, and then once again during the emergency crisis in the spring.
That's good. You know, that'll, in case of a breakdown as well, it'll help ensure our count get done even quicker, so.
That, Mr. Commissioner, that's exactly why we're buying this, is that while we want all three operating, and we're going to have all three operating, what we don't want to do is have one of them go down in the middle of the tallying process, so at least we will be able to still continue to get the count done in a reasonable fashion.
Yep. Great.
Anyone have any other questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
I'll make a motion.
I second.
Another question? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Resolution two zero, zero, one, eight, seven.
Authorizing the Lackawanna County Raza Vojo Grant. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve District Attorney's Office submission of a grant application to the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency for the Lackawanna County Victim Witness Rights and Services Act, Victims of Juvenile Offenders Crime Grant, in the amount of three hundred and sixteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on September second, two thousand and twenty. Here to speak on that is the District Attorney's Victim Witness Unit Supervisor, Bridget Betcher.
Hi, good morning.
Good morning.
So this is the Raza Vojo Grant. This is a two-year funding period, January of two thousand and twenty-one to December of two thousand and twenty-two. These are non-competitive state funds available through PCCD, which is the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency. These funds help support ongoing programming of the Victim Witness Unit and delivery of victim services in line with Raza, the Rights and Service Act, and Vojo, Victims of Juvenile Offenders. These funds, they supplement the federal Voca funds that cover the victim witness unit staff salaries and benefits and general daily operating costs of the office.
Anyone have any questions?
I do not.
Okay, well, on that note, I will entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
Make a motion.
Another question? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bridget.
Opportunity for the public to address the.
Yes, we received three emails. The first one is from Brian Ross. Says, hello, I am registered to vote in Lackawanna County. Can you please answer this? If a person has applied for a mail-in ballot, does that prevent them from voting in person? So to put it another way, would I be wiped from the physical voter role at my polling place if I received a vote-by-mail ballot?
Mr. Chairman, I can answer this. The question is, if a person has applied for mail-in ballot, does it prevent them from voting in person? Yes, it does, with stipulations. If they receive the ballot, they must bring it in with them at the polls if they want to vote in person and not mail in their ballot. They would then hand in the mail-in ballot, sign an affidavit, and they won't be allowed to go into their polling place and cast their vote. The second part about that, if they lost their ballot, they could still go to the polls and then ask for a provisional ballot. The second part of that question, to put another way, would I be wiped out from the physical voter rule if I received a mail-in ballot? The answer to that question is no. They would always stay on the polls, always stay in the books. They're just voting, just like we voted in absentee. Any questions?
Yeah, are there any questions?
No.
Okay. The second email is from Patricia Lynn Nester. This is in regards to the Sheriff's Office. She said, there is a PDF online about how to get a concealed carry permit in Lackawanna County. It states walk-ins at the Sheriff's Office until four P.M. I am disabled. I have difficulty ambulating. I do not have a car. Last week, I arranged a ride to the courthouse to go to the Sheriff's Office to fill out the paperwork in person as per the online instructions. I could not open the door. After waiting ten minutes, a deputy opened the door and asked if I had an appointment. When I said no, she stated that I had to make one. The radio on her hip must have been broken because she wouldn't even call up to ask if they could take me or when an appointment would be available. I was standing there with a walker that I use to ambulate. My physical disabilities are obvious, and I had to endure a lot of pain to get there only to be turned away. I called and made my appointment. The soonest available was February of two thousand and twenty-one. One of my friends has been trying since March to get her concealed carry permit. She finally got it after repeatedly calling for five months. I spoke to the clerk in the guns and ammo department at Field and Stream Store at the Viewmont Mall. He stated that his customers are complaining about long wait times as well. His one customer said December of two thousand and twenty was his appointment. This is unbelievable. The Second Amendment is our right. Waiting five to six months for government service for what is my constitutional right is wrong and needs to be remedied without excuses. The citizens of this county are not going to tolerate this. I paid taxes on two properties in two thousand and twenty. I should not have to wait until next year for an essential service. If you agree that the Bill of Rights is not essential, then please let the voters know. I will be taking names and spreading the word.
Commissioners, I spoke to the sheriff about this, and I could tell you straight up that the, when we started our declaration of emergency, the courts, in particular the Supreme Court of Pennsylvania, declared emergency back in March, and then it continued on into June, and the president judges were then allowed to, throughout the Commonwealth, to declare their own states of emergency, which our president judge has done. From the time in March up until present day, the courthouse is closed to the public for walk-ins in any shape or form. Everything is done by appointment, including hearings. The Sheriff's Department is taking appointments. They are actually being overwhelmed with the amount of people that want to get carry firearms licenses. They're conducting about between fourteen and sixteen permits per day, which is above and beyond what they were doing in two thousand and nineteen. And it just seems like there's an overwhelming request for firearms licenses in the county of Lackawanna right now. The website was not updated. It has since been to allow people the understanding that we are taking things by appointment and that we are not having walk-ins in the courthouse. We apologize for that misnomer on the website not being updated prior to this request. The sheriff will be reaching out to this individual to see if he can make the accommodations for them to come in sooner. The problem with that is, is that they make appointments, people don't miss them. You know, he's waited for some cancellations, but people are not canceling their appointments.
These are extraordinary times, and I understand her frustration, but on the other hand, there are a lot of things people are frustrated about during the course of this pandemic, and this is just another example of that. I, you know, again, I understand her frustration, but there are a lot of things to be concerned about during the course of this, and we can't put people's health in jeopardy. We have to follow the rules that the government decides to impose on us.
Well, I carry my, I have a concealed carry permit myself, and I know they are overwhelmed. They are, they're working as quick as they can to process all of these. So they'll have to, people will have to bear with us until we get through this mess.
And I apologize on behalf of the sheriff in our offices here not having the website updated. It just was one of those things that slipped our minds during this process.
Thank you. Tell her thank you and send her an email explaining the situation. And what else?
Okay, the third and final email is from Rela Scassoladi, I'm sorry, from Jessup, Pennsylvania. It's about the liquefied natural gas project. She said, I'm very concerned and fearful for the possibility of a catastrophic explosion from the transport of liquid natural gas to our communities with the New Fortress Energy LNG project. The high-volume transport of LNG through our communities by truck and our rail possess a risk of fire and explosion potentially resulting in the loss of life and property. Routes under consideration will travel through towns and in many areas around residential homes. Our emergency services are not equipped to handle a boiling liquid expanding vapor explosion. Emergency responders are generally unable to extinguish LNG fires except very small ones. Citizenshipery cannot be safely and completely evacuated from a one-to-two-mile high-hazard zone in the event of a spill. In the event of an uncontrolled LNG release directly from a tank container or a tank car, some of the LNG will regasify in the warmer ambient air and form a natural gas vapor cloud. If the incident causing the release creates a source of ignition, the vapor cloud could then begin to burn immediately at the point of release. Burning LNG poses a significant thermal hazard as it is hotter and burns more rapidly than oil or gasoline fires. Its thermal radiation may injure people and damage property at a considerable distance from the fire itself. Asphyxiation, which can result if LNG vapors deplete breathable oxygen in a confined space, lung damage, which can result if LNG vapors are inhaled, cryogenic burns, which can occur if LNG contacts human skin. Although it temporarily halts a construction on its approximately eight-hundred-million-dollar liquefied natural gas plant in Yale losing township in June, New Fortress Energy eventually plans to ship up to three-point-six million gallons of the liquefied gas every day to a proposed shipping terminal. The industry states that LNG is safe. In fact, they say LNG is not even flammable, and this is strictly true. Methane does not burn in liquid form, but just like gasoline, it starts to vaporize immediately in air. It's the vapor that is flammable and reliably so. New Fortress Energy plans to make and ship three-point-five to four million gallons of liquefied natural gas per day from Yale losing township. per day from Wailoosin Township to an export port in New Jersey. That volume of product will require moving approximately three hundred and fifty to four hundred forty-foot tanker trucks or one hundred rail cars per day through Lackawanna County. Lackawanna County was not consulted by DEP as they approved a major facility for the manufacture of LNG in Bradford County. DEP did not assess how the LNG would be moved from Wailoosin Township to an export terminal on the Delaware River in New Jersey. Lackawanna County gets no portion of the state impact fee from gas drilling. Hence, the costs of the harms of this project will be shifted to Lackawanna County. The project confers no economic or any other benefit to Lackawanna County. Therefore, as a resident of Lackawanna County, I respectfully request that the Commissioners please look out for the safety and well-being of our county by opposing the New Fortress Energy LNG Project. I urge you to take action in the form of a resolution directed to Governor Wolf in his capacity as a voting member of the Delaware River Basin Commission and to direct all voting members of the Delaware River Basin Commission and convey that the Lackawanna County Commissioners call upon the members of the Delaware River Basin Commission to disapprove the Dock Two project. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Commissioners, I believe Attorney Rizorio is going to speak on this.
I am Chief Jeffers. Thank you. Good morning, everyone. And thank you, you know, Ms. Scassolati for her email and the detail which she's contained within it. There's a couple responses here cumulatively to address what she's raised. The first is, from a basic standpoint, we as the county, or you as county commissioners, or a board of commissioners, do not have the authority, of course, to regulate either state-owned highways, roads, and/or interstates. So commerce, which occurs on those state-owned highways, roadways, and/or interstates, is either controlled at the state level or regulated at the state level, and more so, it's regulated at the federal level through interstate and intrastate commerce. So notwithstanding Ms. Scassolati's requests, the Board of Commissioners are essentially without legal authority to challenge what Ms. Scassolati has raised. That said, that raises really a larger issue for the Board of Commissioners, even if they wanted to consider it, which is where does the regulation then end? And I understand the point here with regards to the liquefied natural gas, but you also have many other industries, including liquid propane, home fuel oil, gasoline, and many other flammable products which are transported through our state and across state lines in the guise of commerce, which is, again, heavily regulated and protected both on the state and federal levels. So for those reasons, Commissioners, notwithstanding, again, Ms. Scassolati's request, the Board should not and could not entertain the request in the form of any attempt to regulate interstate or intrastate commerce. With regards to her request about a resolution, the Board of Commissioners can prepare and vote upon a resolution, but if the resolution does not have any force or effect, then it has no force or effect. So it's really not prudent to do that, and I wouldn't recommend that be done because that wouldn't serve any purpose other than to simply appease the request of Ms. Scassolati and maybe some others, but would not have any impact upon the issues that she raises within her email. If there's any additional questions, I'd be happy to answer those for the Board or anyone that's participating in the meeting.
Well, could we let them know that we are actually, as a Board of Commissioners, not in favor of them allowing it? We understand we don't have the authority to stop them, but could we let them know that it's not something that we are in favor of at this point, and even though we're aware that it'll have no real effect?
I would not recommend we do that, and simply the reason being is, as I pointed out, then where does the regulation end necessarily? You know, when we get into other areas, again, such as, say, liquid propane, propane or home fuel oil or gasoline, any of those are, you know, I'm no expert, so I'm not going to suggest one's more flammable than the other or more dangerous than the other, but they're all flammable fuels and obviously heavily regulated as they're transported both interstate and intrastate.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, Ms. White? No?
No, that was all.
Commissioners, other business?
Just round mute Commissioner Dominic.
Are you again?
I'm going to get a remote for that.
I'm sorry?
I'm going to get a remote.
I think you need one. Okay, so the state eviction and foreclosure moratorium expired yesterday, but there is still money available in Lackawanna County's rent relief program to help those who need. In need. You have to go to our website, and I was just on it to check. It's www.lackawannacounty.org, and press the yellow button. You can't miss it. It's the first thing that comes up on the website. Click the buttons for either rent relief or mortgage relief, and they will lead you to the forms. So in other words, if you, your state relief, since it expired, you still have a second way to potentially get some relief through the county, but you have to apply to it, and you have to go to our website.
This is still a very good program. We still have lots of money left. It's being processed through our Economic Development Directors and her staff downstairs. They will have to go online, as the Commissioner said, and click and do the forms, and we will try to help them as best as we can.
Thank you. Commissioner Sherman?
Just to bring up what I brought up last week, the census. The twenty twenty census is coming due, so we encourage everybody to get online and get registered, www twenty twenty census.gov. You know, that determines where our money comes from for school lunches, fire departments, public transit. There's so many things that that goes towards. So it's very important, and it's getting to the end here, so it's time for everyone to get registered and get that done. So thank you. That's all I have.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioners, I think we would start our Board of Elections in about fifteen minutes. That's okay with everyone?